Okay, I'll go back to panelists. Okay. Welcome, everyone. Good to see you all and attendees that we do not see you out there. But if you follow the raise your hand function, we can call on you as appropriate during the agenda. So we'll bring this meeting to order. Moser City Council, September 3, 2025. Amy, would you like to do a formal roll call?
Perfect. Um, Councillor Campbell?
Here.
Councillor Wright?
Here.
Councillor Lindmeyer?
Present.
And Mayor Anderson?
Present.
And we have excused Councillor Estes, Councillor Kerner, and Councillor Cannon.
Okay, we have a quorum of four. Good. Welcome. Welcome, everyone. All right, y'all have the agenda. Any corrections or additions? I'm aware of one, Andrea. What we'd like to do is we'll add as business item E, the last business item, discussion on giving Andrea approval to negotiate and record a permanent easement for the well five site location with the current landowners. So we'll, we'll add that as number five. Does that work? Or number E under business five? Any other additions or corrections, councilors or Andrea? No, looking good. Okay. All right. Approval of the August 6 council meeting minutes. I thought they looked good, Amy. Any, any comments, corrections, councilors?
Looked good to me.
Okay, look good. I'll entertain a motion then to approve as written. Any councillor?
Yeah, I move to approve, approve the minutes.
As written?
As written, yes. Yes, the August 6th.
Do I have a second? Ron, a second, Ron Wright? Okay, all in favor? See, raise your hands. Okay. Consensus four. Thank you. And again, Amy, thank you for your good work on what you've been doing the minutes.
Thank you guys.
For the record. Okay, business from the audience. Now's the chance to get two minutes to discuss any items of interest. Do we have any Jane or Linda or Miriam? Miriam, you're mid Columbia. Okay. Jane, go ahead. Your hands raised? Go ahead. So you should be unmuted, right, Amy?
You, as the host, will have to unmute.
Allowed to talk. Here, here you go, Jane. All right, Jane, we should be able to hear you.
Um, I, I have a, like, question that we've not talked about or about tree maintenance. I have noticed multiple, many trees in the city that are engulfing the power lines. And so I did a little research. I don't know that I have the right answers, but it appears that the power companies might be responsible for that maintenance. But I don't know how, I, I don't know how, what the city's responsibility is to lean on them because there's like many, many overgrown trees that are overtaking power lines, which presents all of us with the obvious fire hazard.
Yeah, yeah. Good, good. Thank you for that observation. Andrea, do you want to respond to that? And?
Sure, I appreciate that bringing that to, to our attention and it, it, you know, would be an opportunity to connect with the free service around that, determine who is, you know, ultimately responsible, whether it's the city or the power company. I'm happy to follow up on that. As we continue to maintain all of the growing materials in the city limits.
I'm completely. And I, you know, be happy to reach out to, and we have help if I, if I may. It appears that it might be power company. However, when I had one tree in my, like nearby, the power company didn't seem eager to do anything. So I just noticed it's been done clearly in the past, but it's kind of needing to be done again. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jane. Okay, Andrea, Andrea, you'll follow up on that.
And yes, and Amy, Amy well as well. She's got some good connections with the trees folks.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Jane. Any other comments? I don't see any hands up. Okay.
I just wanted to say something about that. It should be in the franchise agreement with Pacific Power that anything in the public right of way, where the power lines are, is their responsibility.
Yeah, you know, given the PSPS, the Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program, I'd be surprised if they're not, not on it. But good observation, Jane. You know, they've been, they've been working pretty hard, you know, through my fire volunteer role. There's, there's been a lot of communication about that. So. Great, thank you, Jane. Okay, we're going to move to regular business. The 2024, 25 year end financial report and general financial updates. Monica Morris, Finance Director, over to you.
Hello. Amy, this, this new platform is very nice. Thank you very much for, for taking this on and trying it and for letting us be your guinea pigs. This is great. So, and it, it would, there is some background noise from Jane if she could be muted because we can hear the meeting through Jane's phone, I think. So I do have some updates. I would like to just, I don't know if you would like me to share my screen or if you want to just walk through, I can walk you through the staff report.
Monica, why don't you try sharing your screen?
Yeah, that'd be great.
See how this works.
Are you seeing the financial report?
I am.
Yes, we are. I see it.
Okay, what did I do?
Might be under view.
Monica Moore here, here now I can get it. I got it. Okay.
Okay, so this is a summary of last fiscal year by fund. And this is, of course, we know, unaudited. You know, not final. That's important to understand because these numbers will, will change as we go through the years and each year becomes final, we roll forward the beginning balances. So this is what we have right now. I wanted to bring to you what it is that we have right now. It is, I will say, as expected. We, we, we hit our, our mark for the most part of, of what we really thought would happen with the finances and it is as expected. We can, you'll see each, each column is by fund. So our first one is general fund and I just really wanted to hit the highlights on the revenues. So you can see the main revenues for each fund. And then underneath that, so that totals your total money in for the whole year. So we have our beginning balance and then the, the top revenues for each fund, total money in. Underneath that, we'll have our payroll expenses, our operating expenses. And I did break out contract operations for you to see because it is the city's largest expense. And what that is, is the agreement for your water operations with TEC and your agreement for sewer operations with TEC. Those two are your largest expenses in the city. So I really wanted to be transparent about that cost. Underneath that, you see the capital projects and equipment. That one is a busy line. Right? You see, it's, it's got something in almost every fund. And then we have our debt payments and all of that totals that blue line that says total money out. So for our general fund, we brought in 833,000, we spent 725,000. That leaves us an estimated ending balance of 108. And just for your awareness, for transparency, I wanted to put in there what we thought we would start the year with this fiscal year. So what we budgeted for 71 of 25 is this budgeted beginning balance right here. So, you know, other than a few hiccups along the way, we were pretty close. I, I thought that we would start our general fund in July with 145,000. We're potentially starting it with 108,000. And so that's how you read this summary chart across the board. We have the water project. The water project is, the timing on this is a little bit unfortunate for the water project because we had some really good reimbursements come in, in July. So if this is through July, that would be a very different number. I want to say we received 117,000 in July. So projects, as we know, are costly. Even if we receive grants and loans, there's still a, a cost to the city for staff. And one of those costs that tend to be hidden is the grants, the loans, the reimbursements are after the fact, right? So that means the city has to float that project first. So there has to be a cash flow available for this project. And we're seeing in that USDA fund and if you were, when we get to the streets fund, you'll see it again, where there's a negative cash flow for those projects. And, and that is common with projects and that's why one of the, one of the analysis, analysis points, when you're doing a, a project analysis is look at the cash flow. Do you have the money to cover this project going forward? And so we, with Colleen's help, we are continuing to monitor that closely. And she's been fantastic on sending in reimbursements promptly. Just, I know, I know a lot of you are included in those emails. She's been great with it. Our water fund, our, our water, and, and the other thing I wanted to note there, I did just do real high level of what all the projects are right now in each fund. There are various levels of completion, completeness. But just so you're aware of what is making up that capital project line. So in the water fund, we had money that went to the lead line inventory and, and telemetry. You will see that we ended well in water. But we do have some debt in our, that we're going to need to pay for out of water coming up. So, so, but we're doing okay there. Our sewer fund, we have our mixing zone. We have our UV system and then of course our wastewater treatment plant, which are all maybe combined in some manner. But our UV system is expensive and the money is going out the door now for that. It did start last year, but we have paid 30, about 35,000 and we have another 72,000 going out next week for the UV system. You will see in our sewer fund, our operating fund, the contract operations for the year. This is a full year of TEC and it was just under 139,000 is what was paid to TEC for just contract operations. That does not include the monies paid out for equipment and supplies or testing fees, the other items that were not paid to TEC directly. So again, that's your largest contract. It will be closely monitored and audited. So I want to make sure that you're all aware of, of that cost as well. Our streets fund, our streets fund, the only reason we ended in a negative in that, in that fund is because of the EV charging program, that project. Again, the timing of it, we have the payment, the last payment coming in. I believe Colleen, just this week, got approval on that final payment and it should be here in the next couple of weeks, which will cover the cost of that negative balance you're seeing. So again, it's a, it's an unfortunate timing situation, but that is how it worked out. And that project is done. That EV charging is done. Gary, yes?
I agree. Yeah. The money going out for the, the UV system, is that for equipment expense or operating expense?
Equipment.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, this is. This is all new equipment and this is that equipment that we need to get installed, I believe, by the end of September to meet some regulations. Yeah, that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
It's covered by the grant.
Right, the total cost of equipment is covered. There is some matching funds that we have to, in fact, that's, that, not the mixing zone study, but the UV system is part of the larger redevelopment of the sewage treatment plant that Business Oregon is paying for. So as Monica noted about the EV charging station, it'll be similar with all the money that we're putting forward for the wastewater treatment plant, UV system, all of the equipment. We're keeping everything within two and a half million dollars of the grant. I, I don't think that my time is covered, but everybody else's time who works on it is covered.
And staff time is not covered. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Joint use facility, there has not been a lot of transactions this last fiscal year. As you see, only 47,000 was spent out. Our SDC parks, that is the skate park. So last fiscal year, we spent 1600 on the skate park. In our, actually in our water and sewer SDC funds right now, those are the only two funds. We don't have dedicated projects happening right now. But as you can see, they don't have any money in them either. And they do have, unfortunately, debt payments that need to happen. So, so that will be a conversation with city manager, mayor, and potentially, you know, at some point, we'll have to look at another fund loaning this sewer, some money to cover those debt payments. That'll be a conversation we'll have later this year.
So Monica, if I can jump in, so that one's different than the, the water project USDA funding that's coming in, that's going to close the gap on the 249 negative.
Yes.
The EV charging 900,000 negative, that, that will be covered by, when we get payments from Pacific Power presumably. Whereas the debt payment in the SDC sewer, that's paid out of revenues from the sewer operations?
Well, it has been budgeted. And so this is a, a little bit of as we get each year done and, and roll the beginning balance forward and as we do the financial statement for each year. And mind you, we're on fiscal year 20. We will have to make some corrections to these funds, but the, the plan, the intent was the sewer would pay this debt payment that you're, if you look over under sewer fund, the sewer fund restricted that has the wastewater treatment plant, capital project, if you see the debt there, 153,000, 153,000. That's the debt payment that was anticipated to be coming out of the SDC sewer fund. And so my assumption is in the prior years, and I mean three plus years ago, it was coded to that fund, even though there was not sufficient cash flow. And so we will correct that as we roll forward because we will not submit that to the audit, auditor in that manner. But understand what happens if the SDC fund doesn't pay for it, your sewer operations have to.
Yeah, I guess that was my question.
Yeah. And, and now there's always potential options for inter-fund loans, but we prefer not to go there, not do that because it, that is truly a loan when you're talking utility in restricted funds, right? So, so we will address that. And, and part of that update is in my financial update, which will happen right after we review this.
Okay.
All right, more discussion, more discussion to be had.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
Your SDC streets. So the project that's happening in that right now is your Washington Street sidewalk. We did receive half of that grant, the 125,000. And to date, we have spent, and again, this is through June, so we've spent 28,000 on that project. And then your SDC stormwater is, is your big stormwater plan project that's been going on. I think we're on two years now or something. And you can see the activity for that project. So overall, other than those two negative amounts, which is your two projects, we, you know, we did really good targeting what we thought we would start the year with, right? We, I, I feel like we did good. This makes me feel comfortable.
Yeah, okay, you just answered my question. So where, my discomfort about being solvent, where, where overall, we're solvent as a organization, is that?
Yes. Oh, the, oh, overall, your finances now compared to a year ago are 1,000% stronger, right? They're just significantly stronger, they're more secure. You have managed to really scrutinize what's going out the door. I would say, you know, going out the door is, is really our projects, right? I mean, Amy's, I had to, I had to give Amy permission to, to buy some pens, you know? She just, she just is, so yes, and I know Andrea is always on paying attention to this and I so appreciate it. And we're seeing the difference. And, you know, as we go through this year, we're going to see some more differences and it'll be fun to graph it and share it with you because it's a real win for the council. It's a real win for, for the city of Moser to see this improvement.
Yeah, well, thank you and Andrea and Amy and others for your work on it. Okay.
Yeah.
Keep rolling along here. Thank you.
So Ron, were there any more questions on, on last year's finances?
Counselor?
Yes, I, I, I think I missed something, but the, the big negative number on the SDC sewer, is that, is that the debt?
That, I believe, has accumulated from debt payments being made out of that fund historically. Yes.
Thank you.
So since I'm sharing my screen, hopefully this works. I'll just hop right over to my finance, can you see the finance updates, staff report?
Yeah.
So let's just talk about this. So I've got my hands around the cost recovery process. The intention of how it works. And I did a full reconciliation for last fiscal year. And now that we have put some boundaries around that and we understand what's going on, that process will be much smoother. It will happen monthly, which means once we get those bills in from our, our contract planner and our engineer and anybody that's spending time and energy on these planning applications, we will, when we get those invoices in and pay them, we will turn around and send an invoice out to the applicant within, like, 14 days. So within two weeks, an invoice will go out to the applicant. So we will have this constant flow and turnover of invoices to recoup those funds that they agreed to when they submit the application. And to help us with that planning, that whole cost recovery planning process, we did reach out, I did reach out to a collection agency, a couple of them. We have signed a contract with Credits Inc. Collection Agency, which is out of Boardman. They work with a lot of cities and counties on both sides of the river. And I met with their attorney and he walked me through exactly what we can do and what they do again for other cities and counties, where we can utilize a certain ORS that says we can submit our fees to the collection agency and the collection agency can then add a reasonable fee on top of that. And that's unique for governments because generally the collection agency takes their fee out of what you're trying to collect, right? So we are unique in that we can add it to it. And there's some rules around what reasonable is and they know those rules. We walked through them. I believe their fee will be $35. So if they have to send a letter to somebody to collect an invoice on our behalf, the fee is $35 to, to that person. And this will be for any fees except for utility. Utility fees are a little different and City of Hood River handles any delinquent utility fees. So this, where I see we will use this and I plan on having to use it actually this month is around the cost recovery for the planning applications. I already have a couple that have are delinquent by about four months and, and this is really our only teeth that we have, right? Where we can say to somebody who owes the city money, you have to pay it. So I do anticipate we, we will have two applicants that have outstanding invoices that will be going to collections this month.
Monica, for some reason, is the total outstanding amount something like $50,000? Did you, did you tell me that?
Yeah, so, so actually, the total amount that, of the cost recovery that we paid out that we needed to bill for was just over 50,000. I have sent out most of those invoices. Of that 50,000, we do have about 80, almost 9,000 that is past due, that was due in, in March and April that those two applicants are not paying. And so they will go to collections right away. I have another 10,000 that's due this month in September. And if they don't pay, then they will go to collections in October. So this will happen quickly. This is not going, the city is not going to rest on this, right? The, this is the process. This will be the process. This information will now be included with the planning applications. Colleen has accepted the task of updating the planning application and it will include this information sheet about the collections process so that people understand this will happen. This will not be a surprise to people. And again, that information will come from the collection agency. So we have all the appropriate language and information for people. So yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna let applicants know the city is serious about collecting their funds back, right? We will support you, but you also have to follow up and do your part of which you agreed to when you signed the application.
Yeah, well, good, good work, good initiative.
Thank you.
On this. Okay.
Yep. Ron, did you have something on the collections? You're muted.
Probably a dumb question, but could you give me an example of a planning application? Probably a dumb question, but could you give me an example of a planning application?
Uh, an example of a planning application, like one that somebody has filled out or a blank one or? So if somebody wants to uh, an ADU, right? Uh, then they come in, they fill out the app, planning application and they submit it. And part of that application says they agree to pay the additional cost for the engineer and the planner. Above and beyond what the fee would cover.
So this is, this is more for people wanting to build.
Yes.
Applications for building.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Planning applications, yep, yep. And we're working with Jamie, so uh, just a little more on that. Colleen is working with um all involved, right? She's met with Jamie, she's met with myself um on updating that planning application. And to make sure that the website is updated, so we only have the one with the correct information. Available to the public. So that will be just streamlined and accurate going forward. My other update is audit, yay! So um fiscal year twenty should be done this month. I am very excited about that. It um, when I talked with Kyle and the audit team, they did anticipate it being issued in September. Now, let's be clear, it won't feel good, right? It it won't, you 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 won't get a gold star, but it will be done. And we can move forward, and we're just gonna continue to move forward and get these done. Because before you know it, we will have just a wonderful audit. You will just get one with a gold star and you'll be very proud of it. So fiscal year twenty, I really look for um. Uh, audit presentation to you either October or November, but. For it to be done, at least for you to see it. And and yes, I'm gonna ask the auditors to attend our council meeting and present the audit so they can answer your questions. In the meantime, I am working on wrapping up fiscal year twenty one, so the next year. And then um, if the more efficient and the sooner I have that financial statement done. The sooner they can start on it. And so it is my goal to have fiscal year twenty one just ready within a week or so of twenty being complete. So I can get them going right away on the next year.
Great work, Monica.
Uh, yeah, we just need my, really, I hope at this point next year, we're up to like twenty three. Um, we just need to keep pushing and maybe get two or three done a year.
Yeah.
And we can do it, we can do it, is I, our holdup will be the auditor, so um. I want that to be the holdup, I want us to be waiting on them, so. Audit, um, and then the last thing is the fee schedule. We have been working uh behind the scenes on the fee schedule with um, again, planning. Um, Chris at T E C and just really get getting an accurate um defendable. Fee schedule that we can bring to you that it makes sense. So, yeah, we look for that next month.
Monica, great, great report on all fronts there, financial, any questions, comments from counselors? I'm very, very pleased with the work you and Andrea and Amy and all the contract supporter are doing, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
All right, thumbs up, yeah, you make us feel better. Okay, Monica, you're welcome to stay with us as always, or East Coast bedtime is probably close for you. But thank you, great, great report. Okay, we'll move on, uh, Mid Columbia Community Action Council, Leslie Narimore and and maybe Miriam with you. Um, over to you guys, and you're, you're welcome to share your screen. I know you have some briefing slides, but welcome. We look forward to hearing about all the activities that council's up to, so over to you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm Leslie Narimore, and I am the new executive director here at Mid Columbia Community Action Council. And I have Sarah Kellums with me. And then also Miriam is online, and she wanted to attend because she is a resident of Mosher.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. If I can figure out how to do it, yours open.
There you go. It's coming.
Okay, perfect, all right, so. Let's see here, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, great, all right. So I've been here since February, I was appointed as interim in February. And then in August, I became the the permanent, at least for now. Um, executive director here at Mid Columbia Community Action Council.
And I'm Sarah Kellums, I'm Development and Partnerships Director, I've been with the agency for three years.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. Um, so just an overview, um, I know some of you have worked with us in the past, but for those who this might be your first exposure to our work. Um, we're the community action agency that serves Hood River, Wasco and Sherman Counties. And we provide a variety of programs and services to low income community members. And we have been serving the community since nineteen sixty five.
And right now, we're just kind of on a mission to get out into the community. And we are visiting every county and city within our service area. And so we've been all over the place this, uh, last night, we were in Moro um to present to their city council. And then this morning, we were back in Moro to present to Sherman County Commissioners. So we are a community action agency, and community action is a nationwide program. It was formed in nineteen sixty four with an Economic Opportunity Act. And throughout the country, every county is covered by a community action agency. A lot of the community action agencies serve multiple counties like we do, or if it's in a more populous area, they might only serve. One portion of a city. And each agency is a little bit different, but we all have one thing in common. And that that is that we are working to help people thrive in their community. And here in Oregon State, we're one of eighteen community action agencies. And one other thing that I wanted to highlight that makes community action unique is the way that we're governed. So we're governed by what's called a tripartite board, which means that one third of our board. Is elected officials, one third is democratically selected low income representatives. And one third is community members. So Hood River County is um represented by our Commissioner Arthur Babbitts. City, Hood River City Counselor, uh, Gladys Rivera.
And Community Representative Mary Ann Durkin.
Thank you, of Fish Food Bank. Yeah, and then in Wasco County, um, we have Commissioner Phil Brady. And I'm blanking again, um. Who's our other Wasco County representative? We'll look it up soon, you know, so sorry, it is the end of the day, I am really tired. Anyway, you're well represented, um, it's. Yeah, sorry, we'll move on and we'll come back to that, that's really embarrassing.
So, so actually, so our um second representative from Moscow County is Linda, Lena Lindhorst. Who works with the Next Door. And and right now, we do have one vacancy um for Wasco County, so we're working to fill that.
She's new and we will never tell her that I forgot her name. Um, so this next slide is all about the pr- promise of community action. And this is kind of the umbrella that every agency works under. And it's that community action changes people's lives, embodies the spirit of hope, improves communities. And makes America a better place to live. And this is something that we do take really seriously here at MCAP.
Um, two things I'd like to highlight about our mission. Um, the work that we're engaged in is complex and it's long term. And we really approach it through partnership. We believe that um partnerships both within the um private sector, between community based organizations. Between governments and um community organizations. And then with individual community members is really the only way that we could successfully. Address the complex problems that we're working with. And then also, I'm highlighting our staff. We have a staff that really represents the community and the people that we serve. The majority of our staff have a background of um experiencing poverty themselves. And that means that they're really uniquely positioned to connect with the people that they are supporting. And to build trust and listen to what is needed and how they can support.
So this slide represents what we call our continuum of care. And a lot of our clients who seek out our services come to us through our emergency shelters. Now, that's not all of our clients, but a good portion of them do come to us through our emergency shelters. And we have the seasonal shelter in Hood River that operates during the winter. And then we also have a pallet shelter at the Gloria Center here in the Dawls. That operationalizes for emergency situations. And when people come to us seeking shelter, our end goal is always going to be to get them into housing. When someone comes in for shelter, we don't want them to end up back out on the street. So if they're coming in through shelter, our next move is to try to work with them to get them stabilized. And potentially into our transitional housing, which is at the Annex. That's the old Oregon Motor Motel in downtown the Dawls. And then because that's transitional, we then move to get them into a permanent housing placement. And so we work with a lot of private landlords to get people stabilized into housing. We provide rent assistance and security deposits and all of that. And they hold the um lease with the landlord. So that when we are able to, when they're stabilized and we stop providing that assistance, they get to stay there in that home. And the green portion off to the side there, that's what we do to prevent people from becoming houseless. We know that it's a lot more expensive if someone loses their housing and we're trying to get them back into housing. Versus keeping them there in the first place. So we do have some eviction prevention programs, and then also our utility assistance can help with that as well. Because a lot of times, if someone gets their electricity shut off, the next thing that happens is an eviction notice. So these are our community highlights from the last year. And in that utility assistance program, probably the most well known program that we have is what's known as LIHEEP. Which is the Low Income Housing Energy Assistance Program. And we never have enough funding in that program, so we do prioritize seniors and disabled. Could um households in the community. We have a lot of seniors who depend on this program, who are on a fixed income. Um, when they're on a fixed income and their utility bills go up in the winter, their income does not. So that's where this program is able to step in and help keep people warm during the winter.
And then I'm related to the um data that you're seeing about our housing programs and community impact. I wanted to highlight that um the two hundred and eighty people that last year we helped avoid eviction. That would be in alignment with that green circle or oval from the last slide. And then also, um, we'll talk a little more about our veterans program in a few minutes. But um, we do have a focus on supportive services for veteran families and supporting veteran households. Um, and then we are currently working with over a hundred landlords across the service area of Hood River, Wasco and Sherman Counties. And that's an area that we're always looking to expand. And then that's an opportunity that you all or your neighbors, um, your, your family members. If you, any of you have a rental property and you're interested in learning more about that, or you know someone through your circle of contact. We would love to share more information about what that can look like to partner with us, answer questions. Um, and something we can share as a follow up, um, we have developed some video stories. And one of those focuses on a landlord partnership.
So the Gloria Center is where Sarah and I are sitting right now. And we've been open here in the Dawls for just over a year now. And the Gloria Center is really a one stop shop, it's what's known as a navigation center. So we have a lot of partner agencies who are on site with us. So when a client comes in, they're able to have all of their needs met. Instead of coming in, we can do one thing and then like getting sent somewhere else, they're able to get all of their needs met here in one spot. And prior to being here in the Gloria Center, we were in an old house over on Fourth Street. And it wasn't a very dignified work situation for our employees. We had employees who were like working out of closets in the basement. And so this has been a much better location for us, and it's also a much better location for our clients as well. And up to this point, we've been providing kind of a broad overview. And now we're gonna move into talking more about more specific programs.
So in Hood River County, we have two physical locations. We have um a, an office in downtown Hood River that's on the corner under the Insurance Building. Across from Hood River County Administration. And that's open regular business hours. And anyone from across our service area can come in and meet with our staff to learn about how perhaps our housing, case management. Or utilities assistance might be able to support their family. And then we also have the Hood River Shelter location, which is on Oak Street on the way out toward Safeway. And um, at that site, we operate the Hood River Winter Warming Shelter. And that provides that emergency shelter with basic needs supplies. And then we also bring our housing team in to provide case management and connections to other community resources.
And our next location, which I mentioned previously, is the Annex, it's the old Oregon Motor Motel. And it functions as transitional housing, we have fifty four rooms there. And one side of the property is designated for families, and then the other side is for individuals. And prior to the Annex, we did not have a way to provide shelter for families. So if we had a family who needed emergency shelter more often than not, we would have to put them in a hotel. Because we couldn't mix singles and families in our pallet shelters. But now that we have this new location, we're able to provide shelter for families as well. And the Annex has increased our um shelter bed count by over two hundred percent. So that's been a really good thing for the community. And another really good thing is just that clients really have a sense of pride in their space at the Annex. I don't know if any of you have been by recently, but it's really a beautiful facility. There's lots of flowers and plants growing everywhere. And all of the clients have been the ones who have taken care of that garden and planted the seeds. And um, it's just a really nice space for them to kind of recover and figure out what their next steps are. And we have some key partners who provide services on site at the Annex. I think the two that I'd really like to highlight are Center for Living. So they're there and they provide onsite case management for clients. And then also, um, One Community Health brings their mobile medical unit on site. And so clients are able to get service at medical services right there on site. And then another um thing that I wanted to share that happened recently at the Annex is we did a mural project. And so that mural is on the west side of the building. And that's another thing that's really beautified and brightened up the space. And it's something that clients were able to participate in, they got to do some of the painting as well.
Um, we have recently, um, since Leslie joined our team. Um, started doing regular outreach to Sherman County, and we're really excited to add this. Because especially for folks living in Sherman County, it is quite a distance to come to our office location. So twice a month, um, s- some of our staff are going out during their senior center um lunchtime meal. And providing information about our programs, answering people's questions and connecting with resources. And so that is kind of a new addition, it's something that we plan to continue moving forward year round.
And this is Jessica, she works in our SSVF program. SSVF stands for Supportive Services for Veterans Families. And so this is a program that is specifically for veterans, it provides rental assistance and basic needs and case management. And then as part of that program, we also own the. And then as part of that program, we also own the Hamilton Apartments in the Dawls, which are nine units of permanent housing that is only for veterans. And almost all of our case managers are certified as community health workers. And community health workers are people, most of them are, have lived experience and they are able to have specialized training that helps them help clients navigate services, which is something that can be really challenging. And I think maybe one of the most important pieces of them being certified as community health workers is that there's also a focus on self-care. So they've learned how to have better boundaries and how to take better care of themselves so that they can in turn take better care of their clients.
We also wanted to mention the regional work of the Mid-Columbia Houseless Collaborative. MCAC is one of the lead conveners of the collaborative, which includes over 40 partner organizations that are working on housing solutions and improving services. So that includes social service and health partners along with local governments. And we're working on a strategic plan for the collaborative with four goal areas of shelter, services, housing, and advocacy. And right now, we're right about midway through our five-year strategic plan. And we've made a lot of progress. Some of the projects we talked about already tonight are part of the collaborative's goals. And then we've also been each fall holding a housing stabilization summit. And this will be the second year that we're holding that at the Civic Auditorium in the Dawls. And we'd like to invite you to join us on the evening of the summit for a community screening of a film called No Place to Grow Old, which is highlighting the challenges of elders who are aging into houselessness and a community conversation. The goal of this film is to raise awareness and build connection around some of these challenging issues. And then we can do the slide next slide. Another piece of the Houseless Collaborative is the Lived Experience Work Group. And both Miriam and I get to participate as staff conveners for this group, which is people who have lived experience of houselessness, who advise and provide input on the Houseless Collaborative's key projects. Most of the workgroup members are now employed in social service agencies around the gorge. And it's really one of my favorite parts of the month. One of the projects of this workgroup is the Video Stories Project. So earlier I mentioned the landlord's video. We have a couple short format, three to four-minute videos. And if you're interested in some follow-up materials, we can send out if you'd like to watch those. We also did an advocacy day to Salem this year to build comfortability in that public space. And next year, we plan to return with more of a direct advocacy focus and meeting with legislatures.
So this is our last slide. And I kind of wanted to bring it back full circle because we were talking about community action at the beginning. And for me, community action, the action is the most important part of what we do. Community action means that we have the ability to remain flexible and pivot as different community needs arise. A recent example of that is our efforts for the Rowena Fire. We were able to operationalize the Gloria Center as a shelter after the Red Cross Shelter closed. So we were able to take in some people over that weekend. And then we've also been working with families ever since then. We currently have 26 families on our caseload. And we've been able to get 19 of those households into new homes since that fire took place. And that's a pretty amazing feat for us. We usually are not able to do rehousing that quickly. But I feel like because the community cares and the community was aware of the need, we had a lot of landlords who reached out who might not have done so otherwise. Another thing that's really important in community action is that we follow our community's lead. So we're mandated to do a community needs assessment every three years. And we're going to be kicking off the next round of that this coming spring. And then we also do strategic planning every five years. And those cycles don't quite line up, but the strategic plan is based on the community needs assessment and also the just feedback that we receive from the community. And we take that feedback and integrate that into every level of the agency. So things that clients tell us, community members, we are then internalizing that, looking at it through the lens of the work that we do and how we might need to change. And so I love working in community action. And I think that our ability to remain flexible and serve our community's very specific needs in different ways is something that is really amazing.
Well.
That's the end of our, oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. Go ahead. Where do you finish?
We, I just wanted to say we welcome if you have the time and have any questions tonight. And we're happy to respond to questions. Or if you go away from tonight's meeting and you wanted to follow up with any of us, we are, we're happy to continue the conversation.
Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you. And I see Ron's got his hands up. I have a question for you. But thank you. Great presentation. I know personally, I have a much better understanding of your mission and your programs to accomplish the mission. But my question is, is there things, and maybe your very last slide about the community needs assessment gets to this. Is there anything we, as a council and a government here in our small community, should do or think about doing in terms of helping your program be successful? I mean, are we an information conduit to people? What are those kinds of things we should be thinking about going forward?
Yeah, I think that that's exactly right. One of the most important things that you can do is be aware of the services that we provide. So if you know of people in your community who have a need, you can refer them to us. I think it would also be appropriate for you to advocate for different programs and just different things that come up that affect the work that we do. One thing that I can share is that a lot of our federal funding is unknown right now. So, you know, having people out there who have the ability to legislate and speak with legislators and just share, you know, the important work that we're doing is a huge help.
Yeah, yeah. Great, great point. I was wondering about federal funding, given what's going on. Counselor Wright, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, so that actually relates to my question. I was curious where the majority of your funding comes from. Is it mostly federal? All federal?
The majority is state funding with some of that being federal pass-through. And then we have our second largest funding stream is federal, followed by health systems and then local government and then community giving and private grants and foundations.
Okay, thanks.
President. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to add one thing to that. The thing that makes us community action is that we receive something called the Community Services Block Grant. And that is federal money that comes down through the state.
And one more follow-up about just sharing information about our services. So between Miriam and I, if you all don't already have these information cards in the city offices, and we've updated these recently and we have them in English and Spanish. And we're always happy to restock those so that you can have them on hand if city residents come in and are asking and you might be able to connect them to us.
Yeah, great, great thought. Counselor Campbell.
Hi. So actually, your pamphlet was a perfect segue into this. So I was going to ask, A, could you provide your emails? Again, I didn't catch them at the end of your slideshow. But B, I own and operate the Moser Market. And so I have actually had your information at my market for a while. But I would love some updated pamphlets. And then do you guys have like a hotline that people can call? Or like, what's the best way if somebody, I mean, we, I see a lot of people that are passing through town that sometimes can use services. And is there a way that they can contact you guys? Or do I, you know, how does that work?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So they can either go to our website and do an intake there or they can call. And then we also do have, and this is new for us. We have one of our employees who's really focused on outreach. So he spends a lot of time traveling to areas where he knows where people are congregating, trying to make connections, build trust, let them know what we provide and encourage them to come and seek those services. And we can, we can definitely be sure to get you some more pamphlets. You said the store?
Yeah, the Moser Market. Yep, the one little grocery store right in downtown Moser.
Okay, yeah, awesome. Yeah, we could definitely do that. And then we also do provide, and I don't know if Jay has been by City Hall to do this or not, but we provide something that we call cooling bundles, which is it has water and a cooling cloth and other resources, chapstick, sunscreen, things like that, to help keep people safe. And we hand those out for free. And we're always happy to stop in and restock if there's a need for that.
And I made a note about the rack cards. Also, this is our first fully virtual meeting in the presentations we're doing. So I'm thinking some of the printed materials we brought, we're bringing to in-person meetings. We could send our, we can send our PowerPoint that we shared and then just a few PDF documents. Amy, would we work with you on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, Amy provided your briefing slides to us. So we have those. Great.
Okay.
Well, I don't see any other questions. Thank, thank you, ladies. Very nice briefing. You know, helpful to understand, as I say, how we can synergize, you know, your mission with our mission. So thank you. Good, good briefing. And thanks for this.
Thank you. Yeah, so much. Have a good evening.
You're welcome to stay with us if you like.
I am going to drop our email addresses in the chat real quick, but thank you.
Great. And Amy will catch that. Okay, thank you. All right, we need to talk about giving Andrea authority to enter an intergovernmental agreement regarding the Transportation Growth Management Plan Study Effort on Parking Utilization and the Transit Stop in Moser. So Andrea, over to you on that topic.
Hi, this is kind of the formalized final step in order to authorize and begin the transportation or the transportation growth management project specific to the parking study. And you've had that information before you. But this has been vetted by the city attorney, had additional language put in to protect the city. And this is the formal document from ODOT, moving forward to, you know, agree to participate and provide the portion of the city's responsibilities during that time. And you see they're outlined in about, I think about five, five different products. And within each of those, the city has a certain amount of things to do. Amy and I and other staff will be participating. But I don't expect that time to be too significant. Most of the things we're doing is providing documentation and comment and reviewing the documentations that they bring towards us. So this formalizes it with ODOT to allow us to move forward with our parking study. And I'm happy to take questions.
Andrea, I take it you're, so you're obviously, you're comfortable with your city's commitment of effort. And it's parking and the transit stop is part of it is.
Yes, that's correct. You know, the parking study is a very large portion of the city, you know, the city downtown area, which was great that they expanded it to that extent. We've had a lot of pre-meetings talking about what our needs are. So I'm, you know, I'm encouraged, counsel, to approve and allow me to enter into this intergovernmental agreement.
Any, any questions, comments for Andrea before we, yeah, we want to do this. It's free. Other than staff time, it's free. Their effort doesn't cost us, right? It's part of a grant? Yeah. Go ahead. Brenna, you have.
Okay, so this is just like kind of our first step, the preliminary, like we're doing the parking study to then move forward to see if we're going to be doing like a, like a key parking area and that kind of thing? Or are we already thinking about those things?
They'll be providing recommendations around, you know, public parking as well as on-street parking for the designated area. A portion of that is doing a count, which is part of the city's responsibility. So during those busy times come this spring, I'll be enlisting folks to, you know, go out and count cars a couple of times a day.
Yeah, good. This is an important step. I know Jane's online here with issues we've had around city that we've tried to address with parking signs. And this, I think, will help us with their recommendations. Figure out, can we make improvements in how we handle parking and the transit stop? Okay, well, I think Amy's got in the packet a.
And Ron has his hand up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ron.
Oh, so they'll come back with recommendations at the end of this. Are we under any obligation to implement those recommendations? Or is that up to us to decide what we want to take?
I'm going to speak from the seat of my pants and then refer to Colleen for that. Yeah, you got this. But I, this will be, become part of our transportation growth management system as far as recommendations for public parking in the areas that they recommended or that they've found to be most suitable.
Yeah, I think once you get a study like this, what happens then is say, two to three years down the road, when you have more funding to follow the plan and implement some of those recommendations, just consider that you won't start from scratch again. You'll just go back to it and reference it and follow it. And that gives you a place, you know, a jumping off point.
Maybe, maybe a basis for seeking grant funding, various programs that may become available. And we have a study that backs up what we're seeking.
Right. And sometimes things happen, like maybe a developer comes in and builds an apartment building somewhere that wasn't included in the study or something like that. Then you have to, you know, you have to work with your planner, your city planner, to interpolate what the plan, the TGM plan said and the transportation system plan together.
Okay, any other questions or comments? It seems, seemed like a good thing to do. And Andrea, you're comfortable with the effort that's involved here. Jane, I see your hand up. It's not really time for a public comment, but I'm going to give you 30 seconds. Go ahead, Jane. Do I have to unmute Jane? Ask to unmute. Does it, Amy?
One more time.
Amy, can you help me? It says ask to unmute, but it doesn't do anything. There you go.
I'm just, was trying to ask questions on chat and was unable. So I'm not able to participate. So that's all I will say at this point.
Okay, well, if, go ahead and throw out what you were asking.
No, not now.
Okay, we'll follow up with Andrea then.
Complicated.
Yeah, follow up with Andrea and Amy if you want, Jane. Okay. Okay, would somebody entertain the motion to give Andrea the authority to enter into the IGA?
I'll make a motion. I move that the council authorized city manager Andrea Rogers approve the execution of the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Transportation and Growth Management TGM program.
Any discussion? You have a second? Second out there. Ron, seconds. Okay. All in favor? All four are in favor? Great, thank you. Thanks, thanks for your work on this, Andrea and Amy. Okay, moving on. Over to Colleen. We are planning to reapply for the Department of Energy Solar Battery Backup Grant for the Joint Use Facility. And Colleen can explain why we need to do that. So over to you, Colleen.
Hi, everybody. This is just a simple requirement of the grant application. Essentially, we already have this grant for $598,000. However, that will expire September 30th. And because it's for the joint use facility, we won't have a chance to use those. And because it's for the joint use facility, we won't have a chance to use those funds. They're reimbursable funds, which means that we have to spend the money on the project first and then get reimbursed like, much like our other projects. And so when I was on the phone with Jason at the Department of Energy, he strongly encouraged me to consider with council that we pursue the grant at this run, which is due September 19th. And so one of the requirements of the grant is that we either have a letter or a resolution or something from the city council. And so because I'm just used to the resolution format, I pulled this together. So are there any questions? One thing to note is that this grant gives us the opportunity to ask for more funding. When we went to bid last summer, we found out that we were probably gonna be at least $100,000 short for the actual cost of the solar array and battery backup system. So this, this grant will, we have the opportunity to apply for up to a million dollars. We won't need that much, but probably, we'll probably ask for around $750,000. Giving, given the escalation, you know, we won't build anything for at least another year.
Any questions for Colleen? I think this is a smart move, right thing to do. Little, little time on Colleen's part, but good. So would anyone entertain the motion to adopt the resolution? In your, in your packet? At the bottom of the packet?
Yeah, I could take a stab at that.
Thank you.
Uh, see, I move that the council adopt resolution number 2025-10, authorizing application for a community renewable energy program grant from the Oregon Department of Energy.
Any discussion? Second? Anyone second? Gary, seconds? Okay. All in favor? All in favor? Four unanimous. Thank you, Colleen. Colleen, thank you for your continuing work on the joint use facility. All right, moving along. Great. So we added the agenda topic to give authority to Andrea to negotiate and record a permanent easement for the existing or for the well five site that we're in construction on. And Andrea or Colleen, Colleen pulls up staff paper. Do we want to pull that up?
Share that staff report.
Andrew, are you gonna present the staff report or do you want me to? You've got it.
Yeah. Does everybody see this?
Yes.
So this is, this has become a, you know, kind of an immediate, that's why we put it on the, the council agenda today because the Clarksons have been working with the city for almost two decades to, you know, provide easement and support our water system. And they're preparing to sell their property. One of the agreements we, we have from the background, right, the city has a temporary construction easement for the past several years. That is recorded on the, the county website. The city originally paid them $5,000 for the temporary easement. There, there was a bit of confusion related to the water rights. And it was determined that, I'm sorry, that, that this was a suitable location for well number five. Kind of getting ahead of myself. So the city would like to move forward with a permanent easement agreement to include the following terms. And that is that the city will pay the Clarksons the $35,000 and install a water level monitoring system for the existing private well on the property per the current agreement. They will record a restrictive covenant to protect the buffer zone and payment will be provided to them at the time that they record that permanent easement and covenant. The original agreement stated that the, that the payment would be made once the well project was complete and the well determined viable. And through many conversations today with, with, with Colleen, John Grimm, who has extensive history as well, both Colleen and John and Laura, we determined that it's in the city's best interest to secure that easement now. Although, and that there's very little risk that this well will not be viable. So we're weighing that with risk, with the risk of, of not, not completing this agreement at this time and taking it, taking it on with the new owners of the property.
Gary, you have a question. Go ahead.
Yes, just have, have the current property owners, the Clarksons, have they already agreed to this price? In, in, in theory, Andrew?
Yes, they have. It's part of their, it's part of the, the temporary agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a really strong point that Andrea made in conversations earlier that if we don't do it now, we risk the price going up with the new owner. Yeah. You know, it's in, and it's also in good faith. This, this was the basis of the project going back four or five years. Part of it is on us because the project's been delayed so much. I, I'm, I'm convinced this is the right thing to do. And it's also, the other, the other point is, is Colleen pointed out, this is in our budget. There, there is a line item in the USDA and, you know, the product, overall project funding from USDA and EPA. So, so this is covered. So I think it's the right thing to do. It's gonna take a little work from Laura and Andrea to get this done. But I, I encourage us to approve the, the motion here. Any other questions for Andrea or Colleen? And Colleen, by the way, is doing a really great job managing this project. Without her help here, we wouldn't have gotten this done. So anyway, kudos there. If not any other questions or comments, would, would someone entertain the recommended motion here?
I would.
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead, Gary.
Go ahead.
Okay. I move to approve the location for the construction and operation of the city's well number five and authorize the city manager to negotiate and record a permanent easement agreement with the property owners on the terms presented tonight.
Any discussion? Anyone second? Ron? Ron, second? All in favor? See four hands? Great, thank you. Andrea, thank you too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Before we wrap up, we'll go to some updates. I have a couple, Andrea, and probably have a couple. Let's, let's start, let me start with postal service. So Amy's great work. She's been calling the postmaster regularly and kind of getting a hand in the face and not getting a response. I've made two calls where somebody actually answered the phone and took note and said the postmaster would call me back, which he hasn't. I went to the post office last week to meet with him. He was out delivering mail, but I would get a call back. Meanwhile, Commissioner Hagy has talked to the postmaster and just bumped into him while he was delivering mail, of all things. And Commissioner Hagy brought up Mosher's issues that we want to get resolved. And apparently, the postmaster, Joe Atwood, told Commissioner Hagy, hey, I'm aware of the problems and I'm gonna fix it or the challenges, I'm, I'm gonna fix it. So that's good. Also, I stopped in and talked with Victoria, Victoria at the post office a couple of days ago. And she said, hey, I am not charging people for their boxes now. So that's. So what, what we're trying to do here is just get a written policy from the postmaster to that effect. The second issue is getting their approval on the location for the cluster boxes at the senior center, which we've agreed, Andrew's agreed, that Rusty could install once we know the location and the senior center operator buys those cluster boxes. So maybe small steps forward, but it, it, it's slow. And I, you know, I, I feel for, for the postal service people, you know, given the challenges they, they confront. Second thing, Union Pacific, second track or siding. You know, going on almost a year now, I think we've been having discussions with Aaron Hunt, UP representative, that we all know pretty well about the project. What is the project? When's it going in? What are going to be the impacts? Will you come talk to the community? Andrea's had several conversations with him. I've had a few with Andrea. And it's been a little frustrating because Union Pacific management, I won't say Aaron specifically, but his management says, why should we come to a public meeting when this isn't a public project? And we're like, hey, you're our neighbor. This has impacts on our community. Any good neighbor would come and explain the project. And a fallback to our requested, multiple times requested public meeting is an FAQ document. And Aaron has told us he's working on frequently asked questions on construction activities, operation of the track, loss of access at Mosher Creek, et cetera, et cetera. All those things that are gonna come up when the community better understands this project. So he, he has promised that. He owes Andrea a meeting set up once they selected their construction contractor. And meanwhile, the schedule slipped a little bit. They were gonna go into construction this, or last month, August. And now it's pushed off to, it sounds like at least January. But they're, they're close to, if they haven't hired a general contractor, they will. One of the things we owe them is good faith discussions on use of the deeded property given to the city from Union Pacific as part of the settlement on the derailment, access for construction staging and access to the, to the project. And, and you all should, should know, if you don't, they maintain an easement through that deeded property. And, and that easement would be just west of the location of the joint use facility. So what we, we have discretion to, to ask for compensation, for safety measures, you know, those kinds of things on use of our property per, per the settlement agreement. Meanwhile, all of this comes under federal, federal law and federal law preempts all local law. So as we all know, we have no, basically no authority, no jurisdiction to, to have any say in the project. So it's kind of what we can get out of the good graces of Union Pacific. This is overseen by the Surface Transportation Board at the federal level. They have an arm called the RCPA, the rail customer and public assistance office. Yes, rail customer and public assistance office. I did a little homer, found those people, called them. A very polite attorney answered the phone and we had some very good discussions. And Andrea and I had a conference call with them. They subsequently met with Union Pacific last week and, and made our case of, hey, come, become more transparent, Union Pacific. We need to tell our community not only the construction impacts, but the operational impacts of having a three miles bypass here that's gonna have trains sitting there. Access across the tracks at Moser Creek gone, potential impact to the trail along the pond on the north side of the tracks, et cetera. So we'll see, see where we are. But I'll tell you, I, I think this is a big one for the city. And I, you know, I'm not willing to let go of Union Pacific and press for them to come and really explain this project. We could have a public meeting, but we, we aren't the implementers. We don't know that all of these effects and construction and, you know, all the things that go with it. So we're gonna keep at it. Andrea's been good about hounding Aaron. And we'll see if he comes through with his commitment to, to meet with us and provide more information. Andrea, anything else I missed that you wanted?
No, I did receive a, a, a short email from Aaron this morning or this af- this afternoon. You know, following up on our conversation and expectation from last week. And, and he would like to meet in person next week.
Good.
So if there's another council person that would like to join me on that, I'll let you know when we're meeting.
Yeah.
And then he also wanted us to let him know if any other contractors contact us because we've been, you know, for months now, I've been getting calls from contractors asking about staging area and then now water rights. And I found out today that someone, you know, found out this donor was our engineer and, and went and emailed him about access to that large quantity of, of water that might be necessary. And prompted him to, you know, we're researching, you know, how much usage the city has had. You know, do we have the capacity to support that? And if we do, at what cost to UPPR? So again, trying to get everything that we can from Union Pacific related to this project.
By the by, Aaron promised us that they have told their contractors not to be coming to the city or city consultants with RFI's request for information because it's taking time. So, so good segue. My, my next point was I'm out of town for the next two weeks. So Brenna, anything that comes up to the mayor level, over to you. And maybe you could sit in on that meeting. But I, I think it would be great if somebody would sit in with Andrea and further discussion. And, and if anyone has questions, it may give me a call. I, I should be reachable, but.
Andrea should be pretty flexible next week. So just as soon as you know anything, let me know. I'll can probably be available.
Thank you.
Yeah. Wait, what are the dates that you're gone?
Uh, tomorrow through the 20th.
Through the what?
Through the 20th.
20th, okay.
I'll be, I'll be back for the, the 21st. Yeah. So thank you. Brenna, you're around, Brenna. Yeah.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, la- last little simple thing for me that Ron and I thought it would be great to get together in a non-business type little social. The response was underwhelming, so I took it to be that people are busy. And maybe we can do this another time or maybe later September, if people want to do it. So we, we can come back to that. But if, if you guys want to do it, you know, we, Laura opined that we should notice that. And, and that's fine. We can do that. But it's, it's just, you know, a little team building. But we would not talk any city business if we, if we were to have this. But we can come back to that later. So that's, that's it from me unless, I don't think we need a joint use facility update right now. Andrea, over to you for updates.
I, one update that Amy will be taking a little bit of time off. You know, she's definitely been putting in quite a bit of time. And we've convinced her that this would be a great time for her to take a little break. So she will be out of the office tomorrow and Friday and Monday and Tuesday, returning on Wednesday. I'll be covering the office as much as possible. She's got all of the notices and, and reminders set so people will know what to do if they can't get a hold of her and need to.
Good. Anything else? Colleen, any, you have anything or Amy? Okay. It's okay. If not, okay, we'll go around councillors. Gary, any, anything? Gary's monitoring the well construction this week and Ron will be monitoring next week, right? I think.
I'm not till the end of the month for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I've got it next week too. I just wanted to take a moment just to thank this incredible staff that we have here. Andrea, Amy, Colleen and Monica. I happen to come in as city councillor at a time just when things are really on the upswing. And, and I just think they were doing a really great job and deserve every bit of thanks. So.
Yeah, hear, hear.
Thank you.
Seriously.
Ron, Ron, any, anything for the order?
Well, just to echo what Gary said, that's such a relief, such a change for the positive that I just, it feels really good. I think we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah. My, my term is our, our ship maybe not aground, but we're riding the ship.
Yes.
All right, President, President Campbell?
Well, just, I mean, echo the same things. But yes, you ladies and, I mean, really, this whole team have been amazing. But yes, just to hear Monica say that, you know, things are, things are okay. Like, you know, she kind of gave us the, the thumbs up and that really like huge relief because we've seen a lot over the last four years. So that was a very pleasant surprise. I don't really have any updates other than I'm pretty much around now for a while. I've kind of gotten everything out of my system for traveling for a minute. So I'm around. I did have a question with, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time. What's the status of getting a new city truck? And I'm only asking because I've. And I'm only asking because I've had a few things come across my desk, but it could be potential options.
Timely, timely question. Go ahead, Andrea. Yeah, great question. You're on mute.
I'm going to let Amy report on this.
So I had a few truck options through the government surplus option that were reviewed. My husband is a decent mechanic and a truck mechanic all around. So he provided a couple of options to look into and review. I did, we did lose an auction today. It went a little higher than I was told was a good good value for that truck, but we still have a few options that are coming up within the next couple of days. So I'm still going to be monitoring these auctions while I'm out of the office. Monica and Andrea have given me the authority to kind of keep an eye out and not go over the budget of max of $25,000, which is the amount that these kind of trucks are going for, but obviously keep it as low as possible.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Andrea, next next meeting, October 1st, first Wednesday of October.
You want me to look that far ahead? I I honestly don't know what what is in the next, you know, four weeks.
Do you anticipate a second meeting in September?
No.
Okay, so so everybody put on your calendars one October and Amy, thank you for sending out your request that councillors try and let let you know 48 hours in advance of their attendance or non-attendance at meetings because it is important to have quorum. So.
Right. And we will have a report from Colleen related to projects, which will I think will be great to great to have at that time as we're, you know, moving towards the end of the year. I spoke, I bumped into Todd Reeves at the market just before the meeting. That's I almost was late. Buying a lot of buying those Powerball tickets, which I never do. But I just I did segue. I spoke with him about snow plowing and he.
Oh, good.
He is all forward of that. So we're, you know, we're forward thinking and that direction. I'm also having talked to Stoner today, we want to do a streets inventory around potholes. And we'll look at the Moser Market and the easement there and exactly whose responsibility that is. And then I'd also want to find a a striping or a painting company to to put in two crosswalks across Highway 30 that ODOT said we can do. If we pay for it, they just need to agree to the location and also at that time extend to park it to the stripes for the school as a as as a, you know, as a neighbor.
Good, good, great. All great initiatives. Forward thinking. I like that. Okay, Amy, have a great time off.
Yeah.
Deserve it. All right, this meeting is now adjourned.
Bye.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Enjoy your time, Amy.